Time to begin at seven o'clock. It's Tuesday, May 12, 2015. We're in the Sierra Room at the Community Center. There's a time, date, and place for the scheduled Carson City School District School Board meeting. And with that, we'll call this meeting to order with a flag salute with Laura Crossman leading us.
Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, here comes Stacy. And just for record, Dion Contine is at a legislative hearing right now and will be here as soon as that's finished. Agenda item number two, adoption of the agenda as submitted, unless there's any...well, we'll take a motion on the adoption of the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and second. Any concerns from the audience? And seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number, agenda item number three, we'll go to the superintendent's reports, and this is for information only. And Mr. Soaks?
Thank you, President Swirzik, members of the board. Good evening. I'd like to begin my report by introducing Ann Britt, who is the Leadership Class Advisor at Carson High School. She has some special guests that she'll be introducing to us this evening.
Mr. President, board, thank you for having us here tonight. As you said, I'm Ann Britt. I'm with Carson High School, leadership teacher, activities director. And I'm here to introduce a few people that are going to be joining us this next year. I have my new student body officers for next year's class. As they come up, they're going to give you a little bit of a plan for next year. First, I have Todd Lanning. He'll be our student body president.
Hi there. So I'm Todd Lanning. I'll be the student body president for next year at Carson High School. And as an overall, I want to, wanted to create a theme for next year's school and council. So I chose the theme, "United We Stand." And I actually want to keep that as a motto throughout the school, starting with our council and then branching out to the school, um, school members and ultimately bring our school together more as, um, students and try to get the students more involved with the activities that we do throughout the school year.
Our vice president in this next year is Caroline Gabica. She can't be here tonight. She's ill. So next up, I have Lee Sarah Simonson. She is the secretary for this year.
My name is Lee Sarah Simonson, and I am Carson High's 2015-16 year, sorry, um, Student Body Secretary. And my plan for next year is to create a computer-based organization, uh, organizational system for completing and planning events in a timely and efficient manner. Thank you.
Next, I have Vanessa Torres. She is going to be our student body treasurer.
Hi, I'm Vanessa Torres, and my job next year will be, I will be the student body treasurer. And my job will be to manage all our classes' budgets and report to vice president, president, and Ms. Britt.
Next up, we have Delaney Fine with our historian.
Hello, I'm Delaney. I'm going to be the historian for next year. My job is to connect and communicate with the NASC, which is Nevada Association of Student Councils, and their state board for various awards and for making sure that we get certain amount of spirit weeks and certain amount of, you know, whatever's on the list for the Silver Star Award. I don't know exactly what it is, but, so my goal is to get all the awards that I can and to make a very memorable scrapbook for next year. Thank you.
Next up is Rebecca Ostrander. She's our public relations officer.
Hi, my name's Rebecca Ostrander. Next year, I'm Public Relations Officer. So that means I'll be in charge of having the morning announcements done, posting on the Carson High School Twitter and things like that. And so a goal that I have is to keep in touch with all of our clubs and make sure that they're getting more involved in the other things that student council's putting on at the school.
And Kaylee Lambert will be next year's school board rep.
Hi, I'm Kaylee. I'll be next year's school board representative, and my job is to take over Jake Jones's position and hopefully make him proud and make everyone here proud and represent Carson High School in a nice manner.
All right. Not only did I, am I here to introduce our student body officers, I'm also here to introduce our prom king and queen and our friendship ball king and queen. Our prom king for this year is Jose Orzoko.
Hi, I'm Jose Orzoko. I had a great time at Carson High School. I was honored to be the prom king. Just want to thank you for everything. It was awesome. I wouldn't want to go to any other school in Carson High School. Thank you.
And our queen is Erica Gallegos.
Hi. I didn't know I was supposed to say anything, but it's been a real honor and, you know, I'm excited for next year. I'm attending UNR and I'm majoring in environmental science, so.
And our friendship ball, our king for our friendship ball is Austin Mead.
Want to say hi?
Hi. I'm not great in high school, but my friend make friends and, uh, on the stuff, I don't know. My, hey, Peter, oh, oh, and can, no, thank you.
Good job.
And Casey Camp was this year's friendship ball queen.
Hi. Kiki.
Did you like going to high school?
Yep.
Yes. Are you graduating this year?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
Congratulations. Yeah. Good job. Congratulations. Could I ask your, or Todd, who is going to be the student body president, with this theme of, what was it, "United We Stand"? Could you come up and explain, not explain, but give us some examples of how you're going to make this work?
So I've actually created a logo for the student council class, and I've produced it into a pin. So I have the Carson colors with, and they're actually going to get their pins tomorrow night at inauguration. And I'm going to help bring the council together. I've tried to, we actually just finalized our council this last week. We interviewed our freshmen. And I just want to connect on a greater level with our council members so that they know that everyone in the council is important and they all have their own specific jobs. And so I want them to be able to take that bonding out into the school as a community and help unite the school as one.
Good for you. That sounds great.
Thank you.
Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Just to add a little bit here, this is a year where I've seen an unprecedented number of student activities and each with an outstanding outcome. And I just want to thank Mrs. Britt and the students and the staff who are all part of that effort to know how much we appreciate that. And I think they've really enriched the lives of our students because of these kinds of activities. Next, I'd like to introduce another group of academically sound young people. And to do that, I've asked Mr. Patrick Mobley, who is our speech and debate coach, to assist in that effort. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, board. So I'm presenting to you four of our five national qualifiers for this tournament. This is the largest group Carson High School's ever taken to the national tournament. I think it's the 13th time we have gone, capping off the best season that we have ever had. Our captain, Jacob Protokhy, who qualified could not be here. He's at work. I'm going to let the rest of my kids introduce themselves, say a quick blip about the event they're in, and then I'll let you know, like, all the fun fundraising stuff we've got coming on in the next two weeks.
Hi, I'm Sadie Share, and I'm a freshman at Carson High, and I qualified in second place in congressional debate.
My name is Shane Morton. I qualified for humorous interpretation, which basically you just take a piece and you make it funny in your own ways. So I'm pretty funny.
Hello, everybody. My name is Shay Lynn Segura. I qualified this year first place in Lincoln Douglas debate, and I'm super excited for Nationals this summer.
Hi, everybody. I am Sandra Figueroa. I'm a junior. I qualified in congressional debate as a fourth-place alternate. Basically, what we do, we take a piece of legislation, and much as we are here today, sit in a room, and we all have to debate the legislation.
All right. So just a couple of the quick props. In all of northern Nevada, in our 18 schools, four kids qualifying congressional debate. And I think it's fitting, the senators took three of those four spots this year. And then Shay Lynn was the last person to go undefeated in Lincoln Douglas. So she stood all by herself for a long time in that tournament, and everyone else was, like, chasing after her and could not catch her. So our fundraising events next Tuesday, from '68, we have our annual exhibition, where we do a little bit of everything that we do, so we can have that. This Saturday, we are going to be at the Night of Appeal. And then in the evening, we're having our zombie run, which is the first time Carson High's ever had a zombie run. So a lot of people on the football field in Senator Square dressed up as zombies chasing other people around. It should be a lot of fun. The 26th, the Sassafras is having a dinner theater, and that was going to be very speech specific. And then on the 31st, Bully is going to be having a restaurant day, where you go and bring in a ticket, and they'll be giving us a percentage of that. The Rotary Club is graciously, not Rotary, Lions Club has graciously donated to us a good portion of money, along with several other groups, the Sausage Factory, Carson Dodge, we have another anonymous donor that's promising a pretty good amount, so we should be able to cut down our fees quite a bit. So thank you very much.
Patrick, before you go.
Yes.
Next Tuesday, where, when, what time?
Carson High School, six to eight, upstairs cafeteria. And this year, I made sure I was able to get it when you guys don't have a meeting.
Thank you.
Could you maybe send an email?
Absolutely.
With all those events to us, please?
Yes, I will, I will do that.
Mr. Mobley, if you'd send that to me, I'll forward it on to the trustees.
Okay.
And you'll want to attach that Bully's flyer, so we can take that with us.
Yeah, so we'll have, we'll put flyers for everything. It'll be a long email.
Mr. Mobley, how much do you guys need to, what are you looking to raise?
We're looking at about $5,500 for total. So works out a little less than $1,000 a kid, and we are now whittling that away piece by piece. So last year, we were able to get it done pretty far. We'll see all we can do this year.
Well, congratulations to all of you. This is, I know it's exciting for you, but it's, it makes all of us pretty proud of what, what you've accomplished. And Patrick, you've done a good job, so, anyway.
So just kind of on a lighthearted note, are you going to be the next Jon Stewart?
Hopefully.
Yeah? We're going to look for you.
Mr. President, if you would join me at the podium, please?
I tell you what, Richard, would you make the introduction of Tammy? I'd like to say a few words, and then I'll come down and join you at the podium.
Mr. President, you wanted me to carry on?
Just, just.
Okay, thank you. As many of you know, Tammy Westergaard will be leaving her post as the deputy director of Carson City Library. And for a number of years, Mrs. Westergaard has been instrumental in partnering with Carson City School District in a variety of ways. And we couldn't let her leave town without recognizing her and thanking her for the contributions, the energy, the effort, the consideration that she has provided for not only me personally and our school district, but for our students. She's leaving a legacy of a variety of programs that have really been outstanding, that really speak to the, um, the time. Our students are experiencing an unprecedented, unprecedented amount of technology and engagement with our employers, and much of this has been attributed to the work that Tammy has done. So we have a little gift that we'd like to provide to her, and I would like to turn the time, however, over to President Swirzik to say a few words, and then the two of us would love to present that, okay?
Make Tammy feel a little uncomfortable, but, but in a good way. And what I wanted to add is just to summarize a little bit specifically of what Tammy has done for not only the school district, but what she's done for our community. First of all, I'll describe Tammy as a person. She's just an extraordinary person. I'll use general terms. She's an inspirational, I had to write this down, I had so much stuff, an inspirational community education leader. And for the city, she's been an architect for innovation. I'm going to use that word, architect, maybe a lot. But let me go into what she's created. And we all know about the strategic plans, the joint resolutions between the city, the library, and, and the school district, all for the betterment of why people would want to move to Carson City. And in particular, what does it have to offer for our students going forward? So with all of that, and I, I'm going to just go back, you know, a few years, that before, you know, technology, we had a library that essentially, you know, provided for fiction, nonfiction, reference materials, and other things. In the last five years, and a lot of this, and most of it, I attribute to Tammy. She's created a learning environment, I'm going to say an innovative learning environment, and, and again, for, not only for our students, but for the community. But for our students, this, not only in-class opportunities, but after-school opportunities. But generally, let me tell you how she focuses this. Everything was focused on student achievement and success. And I worked with Tammy maybe for nine years, and this is, she zeroes in on this. The environment she's created encourages students, uh, innovation, innovative and creativity by having students combine academic achievement with the power of imagination. And that's something you ought to think about, how that, that occurs. She combines the very best of traditional learning with evolving technology. And I'm going to give you some examples of this. Allow students to take an idea, research, design, and build using technology. Okay, those are just a general environment that's happened in the last five to six years. This is at our public library. Some specific examples, going back to 2010, there was a Broadband Technology Opportunity Stimulus Grant. And we're thinking about, okay, this is coming from the library. This is a technology learning center that provides technology training, workforce development programs, and, and technology tools. Through Tammy's guidance, through the twists and turns, we were successful as a city in getting this grant and particularly the library. With our school, with our, specifically with our kids. 2012, 2013, we've all had Nicole Fagundis, you know, come here, both in our joint sessions and individually, with the high schools, honored history classes. But the technology to prefer the documentaries, the digital technology literacy lifted that class, or that, that group of students to a higher level, you know, because of this. In 2014, she was instrumental in the online on-time grant, which led to our freshman class year, last year, creating the PSAs. That was, they were all digitally produced, and they could add now to their, digitally to their e-portfolio. But again, creating that environment for these kids to come in using technology, come up with an idea, design, and build using, using technology. 2011, the Boys and Girls Club, not only the reading programs that go along with what's happened to 2,500 kids there, but she wrote a grant that was successful in getting the branch anywhere, this automated, um, branch. It's, it's got books, it's got e-readers, tablets, you know, you know, audiobooks. But again, Richard and I were there for the opening of that, and that was one more thing because most of these kids are in our school district, and it enhanced that, the summer reading program, the STEM activities provided by the, you know, by the library. And July, now, starting July 2015, the latest, the MT1, that's Machine Technology One Certification Program. Now, what has this got to do with a library? And again, I'm bringing this match to the city. It's, it's allowing our community and our kids, which are part of the community, to get involved with 3D software and then design and development of products, as well as 3D printing. But not only does, is it with a library, but Tammy made sure that everything was connected and gateways to WNC and to the Carson City School District. So it's a continuation. But again, innovative technology, you know, at, you know, Tammy leading the way. That's why I'm coming back, that I, you know, call her an architect for innovation in our community. And, you know, I want to congratulate her for what, for the job as the library director in Jackson County, Oregon. I mean, they, they've got a tremendous asset, you know, for them. And to thank you for all that you've done for this district. So with that, I'm going to come down there.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We have a little plaque, and of course, we're giving this to Tammy to show our appreciation and thank her for the work that she's done, but certainly to wish her well in her new assignment. And like to give her an opportunity to say a few words as well, and, and we thank her for being here tonight.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Ron. Oh, very sweet. I really appreciate it. Good evening, everybody, for the Westergaard, for the Westergaard, for the record, for the record. This is Tammy Westergaard, and it's not my first time that I've been in this room, at this podium, addressing a body. And I just want everybody to know that I certainly appreciate all the opportunities that have been bestowed on me from my hometown that have led me to where I'm headed. I, you know, I'm a native. I'm a, an alumni of the Carson City School District. I, I learned to write well, and I thank Fran Brooks and Esther Cooper for that. And, you know, all of the experiences along the way have certainly taught me a lot. The one thing that I know for sure is that you have to stand up for what you believe in. And our democracy is a privilege, and it's also a responsibility. And I hope that that's something that I have modeled to my own children because it doesn't happen by itself, and you have to have the courage of your convictions. And we certainly know that education matters. It's the only way that most of us have any opportunity to, you know, prosper and to be engaged citizens. And so the work that you all do is the most important work, really. And so I am so grateful for all of it, as it's been gifted to me, and I'm looking forward to my new opportunity in Oregon. But I will miss my hometown, and I keep pretending that it's like I'm moving to Elko only in a different direction. It's just a five-hour drive, so I just appreciate it all, and thank you for the privilege of being able to be such a, I, I did have my hands on all that stuff that Ron mentioned. And the library is a vital partner to formal ed, and I hope that the last number of years have really displayed that to you folks because, to some degree, formal education is too big to fail, but a public library isn't. And unless you are the stewards of that after-school, all-the-time, anytime resource, not just for your students, but for the whole community, in the 21st century, we are lifelong learners. And if we don't continue to learn, we will not prosper. And so it is so important that this asset be protected, and you folks are the ones that have to stand up for it. So with that, I'll just say thank you so much, and I'll see you guys on Nevada Day.
Well, Tammy, you know, again, thank you so very much. But now, any comments from the, any of the board members?
I'll just say real quick, Tammy, everything Ron said, I think, is echoed here. And I remember, you know, back when it was certainly a challenging time, but during your time in economic development, you know, when Carson City was struggling, just your efforts there, too. I wanted to make sure we thank you for, for your time there as well.
Okay, Tammy, have a great time in Oregon, and we'll see you. It's only five hours, and you're right, short drive. Okay, now we're on to agenda item number four, board reports, and, well, let's just go from.
You said, you said board reports, and I thought, okay, that's not me, so. That is essentially my report, so thank you for that opportunity.
All right, board reports. Savannah, we'll start with you at Pioneer.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. It has been a pleasure to represent Pioneer High School at all of these proceedings. This will be my last meeting for the school year, but I look forward to working with you guys next year. Pioneer High School JAG students will be going to the First Annual Career Development Conference in Las Vegas, hosted by JAG Nevada. Eight students will be competing against each other, or with other JAG programs from across the state in the areas of critical thinking, employability, public speaking, and creative problem solving. And on a side note, I'm competing in public speaking, so wish me luck. End of the course exams for ninth and 10th grade students will take place from May 18th to the 21st. A group of students will be touring Job Corp and taking in an ACES game on the 19th. We have our last project discovery trip, and it is an overnight experience at Mount Rose on the 21st and the 22nd. Senior final, senior, senior finals are on the 22nd. Pioneer High School Graduation Night is Wednesday, the 27th, at 6:00 PM at the Community Center. Graduating seniors will have a rehearsal at 9:00 AM the same day. Thank you. This concludes the activities, announcements, and events for Pioneer High School.
Thank you, Savannah. And Jake?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. The end of course exams for all freshmen and sophomores are the rest of this week, and the last couple of AP tests are also this week. This Thursday, the 14th, will be senior portraits, sign-ups for all juniors during nutrition and lunch. It's for them to make their appointment over the summer, so they can get that out of the way and get their seniors started. Thursday is also the Salute to Scholars event at 6:00 PM in Senator Square, tonight for all of the seniors who have received awards and scholarships throughout all of the seniors who have received awards and scholarships throughout the year to be recognized by the school. Saturday, the 16th, is Boys State Swimming here at the Community Center, or at the Aquatic Center. Drive One for Your School is at Carson High, starting at 7:00 AM, and that's a fundraiser for Cheer. Link Crew has their car wash going on from 10:00 to 3:00 in the, like, little U driveway of the school that day. Tickets are $5 there. Culinary has a fundraiser from 10:00 to 6:00 in the culinary area upstairs. And the Speech and Debate Team, as Mr. Mobley said, the zombie run is from 5:00 to 9:00 PM that night as well. Monday, the 18th, is an Early Release at 1:00 PM. And Monday Night Live is at 7:00 PM here at the Community Center. It's the funniest show that you will see put on by Carson High, and it's, it's just great. It's a great night, so if you can make it that night, definitely try and come watch it. Tuesday, the 19th, is a band and a musical theater concert at 7:00 PM. $4 donation is recommended, and it's here. Wednesday, the 20th, is a choir concert at 7:00 PM here. $4 donation is recommended as well. Thursday, the 21st, is Senior Sunset at about 7:30 to 9:30 is how long that's going to go. Friday, the 22nd, is Junior Stargazing from 8:00 to 10:00 PM. Monday, the 25th, is Memorial Day, so no school. And Tuesday, the 26th through Friday, the 29th, is the last week of school, and it's also finals week. And then May 30th is graduation. And I would just like to say thank you to you guys. This is my last report as well. I've been on this board for two years now, and I initially ran for school board rep to just stay in the class because it was just one of the open positions, and I instantly fell in love with it. And I really, I've cherished the time that I've been here. I really, my public speaking has just grown. I love it. I'd like to say thank you to all of you. I have been inspired by all of you for multiple different, in multiple different areas of my life. Miss Wookiee saw that, that the, I'm interested in politics now. I've been speaking in committees, and it's just, it's taken me places I never imagined I would go. And I just have really cherished this time. And I know Kaylee's going to do a great job next year, and I am really, really honored to have her follow me up next year. And thank you, guys. That concludes my report.
Well, Savannah and Jake, thank you so very much for taking the time to do this. Thank you.
I don't understand why you think education has anything to do with politics. Anyway.
He's saying the legislature.
Sealeger, Sealeger, of course, like all the other schools doing its end-of-year testing and all the things happen within the year, but I do want to mention, every year, Sealeger does give away 10 scholarships to Carson High graduates who are former Sealeger students. And that fund comes from the Free Dress Day fundraiser that they have every month, so kind of a neat thing that the school does. And that's my report.
Stacy?
Just real quick, you guys have been great. I can't imagine when I was president, it was great, and I loved seeing Jake Jones, but we wish you the best. And Jake, I think, according to that room that we were in at the committee, they pretty sure you were going into politics, and you handled it very well and made Carson City very proud. So good luck to both of you, and good luck at your state JAG thing. We're looking forward to you. You have to let us know how you do. That concludes my report.
I'll have just a couple announcements from Mark Twain. Basically, every field, every grade level has a field trip coming up, and they're going to have their kindergarten promotion on 5:27 at 10:00 AM, and the fifth grade promotion ceremony on 5:28 at 1:30 PM. That's it.
Okay, for Fritch Elementary School, this Thursday, May 14th, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM, the Fritch PTA is having their, hosting their art show. So if you have an opportunity to stop by anytime, the PTA transforms the cafeteria into an art gallery. And also, on May 22nd, Friday at 2:30, is the kindergarten promotion celebration. There will be singing. And Field Day and Family Lunch is on May 28th, the day right before school gets out. And then just noting that this is the month of field trips, I would just like to thank all of the parents who take the time to volunteer and chaperone and make those field trips possible because they are great learning opportunities for the kids. Thanks.
Jake covered a couple of my things, but I'll just hit them briefly. Yesterday was the conclusion of senior projects for the students, so I wanted to congratulate all the students. And I heard, with the exception of Jake, it went really well. No, I'm sure Jake did a, Jake did a great job. But it was fun. I got to be a judge on it again this year, and it's amazing what the students do. They do a fantastic job. Salute to scholars on Thursday, if you can make that. That's fantastic. And again, our own Jake's going to be there, and rumor has it, he did pretty well for himself. So congratulations. Regarding Drive One for Your School, I just wanted to thank Ford. You know, every year Ford, at least once a year, I think, puts us on. I've seen them help out cross-country, basketball, they're doing Cheer. I know I've missed a few others, but I just wanted to publicly thank Ford for their ongoing support of Carson High School and our activities. Safe Grad is coming up. If you haven't, if you're interested and you haven't paid the money to go on the overnight trip to Six Flags, consider it. If you're on the fence, it's well worth it. Everybody I've spoken to who's been involved in Safe Grad at any level has really enjoyed it. And then, last but not least, I think I just wanted to, it's early yet, but I wanted to congratulate our seniors with graduation around the corner. Everybody worked real hard, and if you're planning on going, get there early because seats fill up quick. So that concludes my report.
And I have nothing to report tonight. The NASB Association of Schools, Stacy?
I have a teleconference on Monday. I'm trying to figure out how to listen to it while I go to Monday Night Live because it's the same time. So if anybody has anything they want to bring up for that. And then just to remind you that there is a, a meeting's going to be here in the end of July for the retreat.
August 1st?
August 1st, and July 31st. And Mrs. Crossman and I are out of town, so we're kind of looking for somebody to help us out that could pick up the slack and be a host.
Who was the alternate? Because someone, I think, is the alternate.
That would be you.
I volunteer.
That would be Steve. So maybe you and, since they're coming to Carson, that maybe you, Ron and Steve could help out.
Just send me an email with the dates.
I will. I'll send you guys the dates.
So I'll put that on the calendar. And Steve, I'll, I'll follow your lead.
And I'll, I'll let you know. After our meeting on Monday, I'll know more details of what's going on there, too. And then you brought up senior projects, and I went to, and I want to thank the staff. I could go view the portfolio at 8:00 Friday night, and I still couldn't make it. So I went Saturday at 3:00, and Mrs. Reedy and staff stayed till 4:30 till the rest of us finished up. So I did want to thank the staff. They put in a lot of hours and a lot of work to make it accommodating all of us, and I appreciated that.
Okay, moving on to probably Savannah and Jake probably want to exit right now. But again, thank you for all your work and time in representing the students.
Thank you very much.
Any association reps here? And, so. Agenda item number six, public comment. And this is the time for the public to come forward for any item that is not on the agenda to give us direction or let us know what you think is good or not so good. And seeing that there's no public moving forward, we'll go on to agenda item number And item number seven is the informational update on the Carson City School District Race to the Top Grant. For discussion only, Dr. Steve Prader.
Mr. Swirzick, members of the board, I am really happy to be here tonight. As you often know, that I come with, with a report that shares kind of the changes that are occurring in our district. And we have some significant changes, but also I have some really good news to report that we've heard from the U.S. Department of Education this last several months, and I want to be able to share that with you. So my presentation today is going to go over what our general progress in our project is with all of the components that, that we have set forth. We'll go over the information that we've gained from the U.S. Department of Education and a review of the webinar that we presented. Also, we would like to really start talking about the data and the reason that we did the Race to the Top Project and the positive results that we are already beginning to see and the significant number of students that are performing better as a result of this project, even though we're still very early in it. And then finally, we're going to close out with the increased enrollment with career and technical education that we've seen over the last two years, with our emphasis in the work of Michelle Lewis and Alan Goslin and other members of our career and technical ed program. So with that, I'm going to show you our first piece, and you can see up here, as of January last year, on the left, you can see that we had, every part of our project was beginning, and we were at the very early stages. And if you look now where we are as of March 1st, you can see that we have completed the first three items. Our curriculum is very close. We know that when we start school next year, we will be at either 99% or 100% of our curriculum will have been completely redesigned and rebuilt and then uploaded into our Mastery Connect system and all the learning guides built and all those associated pieces so that we will really start next year with our curriculum and assessments fully developed and in place. Noting that each year, those will be updated as we continue to grow our system and identify the key pieces. Instruction is on its way moving forward as well, and you can see there, we're about 25% of implementation, and that really is, pockets of excellence have already begun to come forward, and then we will continue to see that grow over the year, and by the end of next year, we'll see that instruction bar all the way at the end. Our professional learning community is the same thing. As we move through the year next year, those will move and be moved to the end. School-to-career pathways, again, we've made great progress. Those are growing and going. And you can kind of see that I'll have the same comment to see, I won't say it every one as we go down, but you can see that we've made significant progress with all of the key elements of the Race to the Top Project. So we've invested our money well. Our coaches have moved, helped move our students. Our principals and other site leaders have changed practice significantly, and you're going to see tonight that our initial data is very, very positive. So first, I want to say that we were recognized by the U.S. Department of Ed, and we have a member that works with us, Dr. Sally Kingston, who's, works in California, but is, is, is our lead consultant or our support person, has let us know, we shared with her our current progress, and then she let us know that she believes that we are the only district in the country that can grade six through 12, identify the learning targets for every student, have an assessment in place for that, have students take the assessment, and we can instantaneously report student mastery of each one of the learning targets every time they take a test. So despite all the other school districts that have received the Race to the Top, and many of them have a similar type project, we are the ones that have kind of cracked the ice and can actually do it. And that has a lot to say about our teachers, our implementation specialists, our administrators, and our district staff for providing the guidance and support to make that happen. And the money that we receive from the U.S. Department of Ed has been really well invested, and as you can see from what I'm telling you today, that is, that is what we, what we've got. I have brought with me today a report from, that was developed by the U.S. Department of Ed that tells Carson City School District's story. So we did not publish this, they did, and it is now nationally being shared with other school districts about the work that Carson City's doing. So U.S. Board members should feel really good about the example we're setting for the rest of the country. Now, I want to talk about the data and how the work really happened. And so I have the opportunity today to introduce Sarah Lobzinger, who is our math implementation specialist and addresses all of the secondary courses, including Algebra I, and her work also carries on to the middle schools in the area of Algebra I. Sarah?
Excuse me, Sarah. Just let me recognize that trustee Contine has now arrived, and I hope.
You're pointing this out more late than it is.
No, I hope you had a good time at the, at the legislature. Okay, Sarah, go ahead.
No, that's fine. Hello, President Swirzick and members of the board. I'm Sarah Lobzinger, the Math IS. I work with the math teachers at Carson High and Pioneer and lead the Algebra I PLC. I'd like to paint a picture for you, but I actually had some volunteers. These are our two UNR interns that taught this year for us as long-term subs from UNR, and they volunteered to come, and I think they were supporting me, but, but I did want to recognize them. I, I wrote this, this story really as Alan Matthews, I kind of wrote it, I think, from his point of view, and, and he, he can definitely vouch for that. Imagine you're a new teacher at Carson High. During the first week of school, you're handed a course summary document that lists 62 learning targets for Algebra I. You've just learned that the school used to break Algebra I up into Algebra I-A and regular Algebra I. And this last year, we decided to drop the lower track, so all ninth graders go into Algebra I. Next, you print off your class rosters, and one class includes 28 students, six in Strategies, which is our new Algebra I Strategy class that the kids take at the same time that they take Algebra I, three that aren't in Strategies but should be, six students with special needs, five students that jumped off the honors track in middle school, and nine students that are right where they should be. So that's, just to give you an idea of these classrooms and what it looked like this year. Finally, you meet your Algebra I PLC, which consists of 11 Algebra I teachers, including yourself, a UNR intern, one social studies certified new teacher, two long-term subs, two veteran new hires, and five returning teachers. So that's what our math department looked like this year. After meeting in your PLC, you quickly learn that your duties include the following. Meet in a PLC weekly to break down data using Mastery Connect and the Data Matrix. Track assessments using Mastery Connect. Dissect each common assessment, which helps you work backwards. Create dynamic lessons. Motivate all students to do their best. Align your gradebook to record mastery. Allow retakes. Reteach to those that need it and enrich those that don't. Make homework relevant and give feedback. Give students makeup work if absent. Communicate with the strategy teachers. Communicate with parents. Create and facilitate rich tasks in your classroom. Differentiate, which means scaffold for students that need support, but don't give too much support to those that don't. And meet the school goal that's 90% of the students make a 60% or higher in Algebra I. So this is what they were, they were asked to do. So it is now May, and you are just about to finish your first year of teaching. Your district is proud of you for making it work. So you can tell from the data, last year, all of the, we had about six sections of Algebra I-A, which is the first part of Algebra I, and then the rest of the students went to regular Algebra I. So with a lower track and a regular track, we had 72% of the students pass. So then, we added all of these things, and we got rid of the lower track. So all of the ninth graders went to Algebra I this year. And you can tell there was a huge shift. So now, 88% of the students earned Algebra I credit, which is phenomenal. And our goal is 90%, so we missed it by just a few, but we worked this semester just as hard, and I, I'm just really proud of the teachers. So you and your team have set up clear targets for your students, created and embedded quality assessments that align to your targets, produced evidence that shows how some things are working and how you can improve on others, and you've made a positive difference in the lives of many children. So now that I've painted a picture of the life of a teacher at Carson High or Pioneer for you this evening, include, in closing, I'd like to say, we've made it. You can see that we've had lots of challenges and lots of successes to report. We've learned that all students can be successful in Algebra I with clear targets and support. We've learned that strategy students need to have one common teacher. This year, we had strategy students spread out. This year, we had strategy students spread out, which made it difficult with pacing. We've learned that teachers are willing to try new things if it's what's best for students, and we've learned that Algebra I teachers have been thrown lots of punches, but continue to come out on top. So every year, we start with best intentions, and every day, we want what's best for students, and it's the teachers' hard work that's allowed me to tell you this story. So I, I let, there's a couple slides that I've added that gives you kind of the breakdown of our challenges that we had this year and challenges we're going to have next year, but it also shares with you some of our successes. So you're welcome to look at those two slides. I'm not sure if you're going to be able to see, see them very clearly, but, so this is this year. What, I tried to kind of give you a story or a narrative about it, but basically, these teachers met weekly and worked really hard to track their data, and it was a success. And then next year is, a lot of returning teachers, our two interns, will hopefully be hired.
Yes.
And so that, that's been great. We hired two highly qualified math teachers, and I believe they will, they'll start next year as well. So, so great news, and then we have a few challenges, but I know I've got a great team to work with, and I just really appreciate the opportunity to continue working with them. Do you have any questions?
I just have a question. You said all of the ninth graders took algebra. Are there still some ninth grade students that took algebra as eighth graders and are taking geometry this year?
Correct. In fact, there's actually a growth there as well. So we've had, we have more sections of algebra at the middle schools now, and so those students will go into honors geometry next year. And we've also changed our advanced algebra as ninth graders to honors algebra, which means they'll get that GPA bump, and we've increased those sections from two to four. So now, I don't know if this makes sense, but we used to have 1A and regular 1, so when we bumped those 1A kids up, then we had this huge gap of learners. So now, we've taken the high level of algebra kids and bumped them up to honors. So we've just shifted completely upwards, and so now that gap will be a little, will be decreased a bit, and in our strategy classes, we're hoping to have one teacher teach all three strategy classes, and another teacher teach the algebra with those strategy classes, so then you have like a team of two versus a team of eight. It was, it was a lot with pacing and trying to communicate. So we've, we've learned that, and we've been able to fix that. Great question.
Yeah, and the point I just wanted to make is, your improvement in the passing rate is impressive, considering that some of the highest ninth grade math students are not taking algebra, they're on it. So you're...
Right. Thank you.
Sarah, what are we, I think the numbers are great, and it's showing good progress, but what are we, when you talk about algebra strategies, my, I guess my concern is these kids that are meeting at, that are in that 90% bracket, but they're at the low end, they're getting, you know, they're the kids who maybe are getting a 61, 62%. What are we doing for the layman to help these kids be successful so they can maintain this, this track that we're, we're putting them on?
So in strategies, they're able to reteach remediate, and so in those classes, we've got some fantastic teachers that are able to support those students by kind of pre-teaching a bit so that they go into algebra with confidence. For next year, that is a concern of mine, because as of right now, we don't have geometry support classes, but we've got a really strong geometry team of teachers, so they will know that coming in. So I believe we've got, the curriculum in geometry is solid. Chanel Kavanagh, one of our master teachers, has taken that on, and she has led these two gentlemen to teach it as well. They have interactive notebooks, and that has really made a difference for those, for those struggling learners. So I have confidence that that will work. I do believe that once our proficiency classes are no longer needed, that we will be able to teach a few geometry sections to support those, those students.
You and your associates went through a lot of change this year.
Just slightly.
Congratulations on the increase in the passing scores. With all those changes, are there a few of those that you, I guess, give the credit for that increase, or is it just, you know, everything added together kind of helped?
I think it's everything. I think we solidified our curriculum this year. Our assessments were vetted and really dissected. Every PLC, Alan can attest to this, every PLC, the teachers really came together and worked on each assessment. Using Mastery Connect, we're learning how to use like formative assessments, which are like quizzes, which really help us kind of drive our instruction so that we're able to know who's missing the targets and who's, who's hitting them. I think meeting weekly is, is really important. Our early outs have been really beneficial, and I, I honestly think, and Dr. Delphine, you can maybe speak to this, I was freaked out to have so many new teachers, but I think they made the difference. They were so enthusiastic and already on board. I think, I mean, we even had a social studies teacher teaching math, and she just came in with that attitude of, I can do this, and she's made a difference too, so I really think it's just all of them, you know, and all their hard work.
Thank you, and I appreciate the importance of the early out days, that you bring that up. But, no, that's great, and it sounds like we're really making that move towards the student-based learning. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll just add, hey, don't leave yet.
We have two more.
I just want to say thanks also, I know personally, on a personal level, how hard I spent many days with her, nights, I guess, at Red's discussing it in important meetings, no. But we've had a lot of discussion over the, over the last year about some of the challenges and some of the work that she's been doing, and I think having, you know, these guys and also your leadership, I mean, that's a big part of it too, so, thanks for that, and I know the energy comes from you too, so it's exciting to see it come together.
And just real quick, I think this is more of a question for the UNR guys.
Sure.
If you guys want to come up, introduce yourself further.
Hello, I'm Alan Matthews. I'm one of the UNR interns, and then Levi Gravo, Levi Gravo is one of the other UNR interns.
Basically, I was trying to find out, from your basis of education coming from UNR, have you found that basis being relative to what we're doing in Carson City? Is the curriculum and stuff, I'm just trying to find if we're kind of aligned with...
Mrs. Wilkie, if I can interrupt. I have always said to our student teachers, the interview never really ends, so here you go. Here's your chance.
I would have to say that it, it does and it doesn't, because from, even though the classes we took from UNR are only one or two years old, like it's evolved from there even, and coming from UNR, like we didn't really deal with learning targets, you know, we, we talked about having objectives and students knowing objectives and knowing what they're going to learn, and the learning targets kind of evolved from that, and it's just, it's been great. So yeah, we, we had experience with it, but nothing like this scale. You know, having, we, as UNR students, we would create lessons for one day of instruction. We came in our first, you know, week or month and semester and now the whole year, and we have had to plan an entire year's worth, and that was, you know, probably the craziest part, but yeah, the, the classes at UNR do a really good job. It's just, you know, once you learn to apply it, and once you start to apply it, it's, I don't know, I don't know how to describe it, it's, it's different, you know, it's, you're not planning for one day and just trying to make one teacher at UNR happy. You're planning for an entire month, trying to make sure all these students are learning what they need, need to know, so.
Thank you.
I just had one question too, since you came up. So, I mean, I, following up on what you just said about that, you know, I think we might be doing things a little bit differently here in Carson City than maybe you would find in other places, and, you know, having that, the group to strategize with and having those regular meetings, I mean, you don't really have anything to compare it to, because that's pretty much all you've ever known, but, you know, I mean, I would, was that a benefit to you? Was having that group, was having, you know, a kind of the mentor, the other teachers as mentors in a group to collaborate with? I mean, do you think that helped in your growth?
I, personally, I wouldn't have had it any other way. Being, you know, me and Levi's situation, like we weren't given the traditional, like lead teacher type role where we go in and observe, and then we slowly take over. It was, here's your class, here's the curriculum, here's what you need to do, go for it, right? This is like your room, and having those like veteran teachers and new teachers and like all the different, you know, teaching styles was, I don't know, it was probably the most helpful part of the whole situation.
And then just a little bit on the data, I mean, using the data, having the data inform, using the tools that we're using here, I mean, again, you probably don't have other experiences, but it, did that help inform your, did you feel like that was a really useful tool in informing your instruction and helping you figure out where you needed to be with students?
Yeah, before this, I hadn't heard of Mastery Connect coming into Carson. That was like a whole new thing for me. Having that data is great, because I can give a quiz over one or two learning targets. I, you can honestly, the student gives it to you, you put it under the microphone, or under the, not the microphone, the camera, and it grades it on the spot, and you see right then and there if they get it or if they don't, and it's really nice, because you can teach an entire unit without Mastery Connect, and then they take the test, and you're like, well, they failed the test. Well, why'd they fail? Well, I'm kind of chopping that into sections. I'll give them one or two learning targets, and I go, oh, whoa, the entire class didn't get this, so I'm going to go back and maybe spend a half an hour and recap on it. That way, I can avoid it, you know, come test time, and hopefully it shows, you know, when they take their unit test. So it's, it's helpful.
Thank you again for letting us come up. I was actually a long-term sub for a little while up in Washoe, and jumping into being a student teacher here, it was just a completely different environment. It felt so much more welcoming with all of us, and it sounds like I'm sucking up a little bit, but, but I'm not, I'm not lying. It feels, it felt, I know.
You already have the job. Okay, just so you know.
But it just felt so much different from working with the teachers up there in the certain classes, having these PLCs where we spend specific time on these targets, which we had never, like Alan already said, we don't really know what learning targets are. We do now, but it was just a completely different environment, and I think it totally changed how we perceived teaching and how, what we had learned at UNR, it changed us for the better, for sure, so, yeah.
Well, it's good to hear that you're still excited, and kudos to you, Dr. Delphine, for going out and finding a way to do this without, because of the vacancies we have. I think that's great.
And Mrs. Wilkie, I will echo what Mrs. Lobzinger has talked about with all of us freaking out in the beginning of the year, but I do want to give you direct credit here, Sarah, and including your colleague, Sue Drozdoff. I think the three of us had a great conversation in the beginning of the year with regard to what are we going to do now, and thank God for our guys and Brittany too. They really showed up, and showed up well. In fact, maybe outshined some of the vets, I dare to say, but thanks to your tutelage, Sarah, and just your willingness to, to get through it and make it work, it's, it's a testament to your tenacity and what you really want for Carson High School and our students. Thank you.
Sarah, and, you know, the two interns, thank you so very much. Now, and Steve, you know, you, you kind of set the stage. Now, Richard and I talked today about having this, the joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors, and, and you guys are going to be the showcase. We need to tell now where we started and what's changed, and there's some significant changes that were presented tonight, and I think it's got to be told by the people doing it, not, not us, not, Steve can do an introduction, but Sarah, with your, no, and, and I say this in all sincerity, that, Sarah, you're...
That's why they're here.
Yeah. Well, how, yeah, how does it work? And then, you know, maybe one or two students, I don't know, but it's now time to tell the rest of Carson City why people that are here should stay here in the Carson City School District, and why people who are considering Carson City should come to Carson City is because of what you're doing. So that's, that makes a tremendous difference. So thank you for all that you've done and what you're going to be doing.
So that's not the only good data we have to share today, as you know from the packets that I sent to you. We are, our middle schools, yeah, so let's celebrate all of the grades. So we look at our middle schools, so you can see that in the past, we had about a 75% pass rate traditionally at the end of the year. So we started our year at our traditional pass rate, and you can see at the semester, Carson Middle School, 92% of the students met all their academic obligations and passed all of their classes, and 90% of our Eagle Valley students met all their obligations and passed all their classes at the semester, which is a significant shift for us, and it is showing that this project is working across grade levels and across campuses. We wanted to give you a bit of a, also a perspective of growth over time. I couldn't put all five years on this table, so what I did was, Alan Goslin kindly went back through our accreditation application for Carson High School and gathered our credit accrual or pass rates for our freshmen in 2009, 2010, 2010, and 2011. Those virtually mirror our 11, 12, and 12 and 13 data, so I didn't put the separate sections just to make it fit, but you can, as I'm telling you now, the first two components there are basically what historically we have done, probably for many, many years, but at least for the last five. And now, if you can look, this is our ninth grade pass rate, our credits earned by our ninth graders this year. So in the past, we were at 68% for our freshman class, and now we're at 80%, but I can tell you, if I look even closer at that 80%, that there's another 5% there that failed electives and thus passed all their core classes. So really, 85% of our freshman class passed all their core classes and are still on time to graduation. This is, see again, with our sophomore class, we have a significant increase in the number of kids passing classes and earning their credits, and a significant decrease in the failure of that. And this is, our other pass rates are our cores only, this is all courses. This, this table represents all courses taught, freshmen and sophomores that I've shared with you, and then true also of our juniors. Now, one of the things I want to tell you, a story about Carson City School District, which is similar to many others, is by the time we got to the 11th grade, if we look historically, our, our scores tended to go up. So you can look at our previous scores, we were at 72%, 73% here in the first two years of our junior, and we look back and we have 64 and 65, and we look back and we have 68, 66 and 68 in the, in the early first two years there. What tended to happen in our district is kids would not perform well, and they would begin leaving us by the time they got to be juniors. So this so-called improvement in scores is really more about kids leaving us in the past than kids being with us. So now, looking at this percentage of juniors, that 82%, that really emphasizes the growth that's happening at Carson High School. So it's happening for all students, and it's happening across the grade levels, and we're going to see fewer students leaving Carson High School, as you can see by the numbers, because they're being successful in their freshman and sophomore years. Pioneer High School is also seeing an increase. They have a ways to go as well, and they're learning that this process is going to, going to be in place for them also. So for the first time, we're seeing a significant upswing in their scores of students passing. Historically, we've seen that a larger number of students failed one or more classes than students that didn't, and you can see then we, as we've gotten to semester, that we are now flipping the scale. So even though we're not up at the 80 or 90%, we've already flipped the scale for the number of kids who are passing their classes, and this is going up. the number of kids who are passing their classes, and this is going up. And we anticipate within a year or two, that Pioneer will perform at or near the levels of Carson High School, because that's the design of that school, and we anticipate those kids to do well. We believe in them, we believe in those teachers, and we believe that that opportunity is going to grow and change. So our initial data tells us this as well. And finally, I want to talk about the increase in numbers in career and technical education. So you know, part of our race to the top is to increase the number of kids that are understanding their career track and get involved in CTE or at least in some job experience. So just in CTE alone, you can see that the number of students who have registered and been part of a CTE class has moved up since the start of Race to the Top from 1,401 students to where we have 1,671 this year, and there's 1,829 students have requested placement in the CTE program. There's just a little over 2,000 students. So you can see that we are really expanding those opportunities for students that are going beyond the traditional classroom setting. So a whole lot to celebrate. We're still very early. We have a lot of growth to go, but we have a good story to tell. Any questions?
Steve, those are different students, right? That isn't just number of classes taken?
No.
1,829 different students.
Comments from the board?
Not comments on the presentation, but I thank you for letting us in on the webinar. That was very interesting to listen to you, Mrs. Whistler.
Yes, and I'll be more than willing to, it has been recorded, so I will forward the, the link to Mr. Stokes. If any of you didn't get to hear it, would like to hear it.
Steve, I think I asked a question before, and we're probably still a little early, but we're about two and a half years in. And when we went for this grant, we talked about our high percentage of remediation at the college level. Are we far enough along yet to where we're getting any feedback? Or are we still a little too early yet?
Well, we're, it'll be a while before it reaches that level, but the one thing I can tell you is that for our kids to be on time, they have to be on time for Algebra II. So you know right now that 88% of our students, actually more than that, because 88% are in Algebra I plus a little bit more that are in the geometry section, so that's probably more like 92, 93%, as I'm guessing here, are on time without requiring remediation. So yes, we're on time with our freshman class to reduce the remediation rates significantly. Yeah.
Steve, do we, are we seeing any changes being considered by the state that'll influence the structure or make any significant changes to it?
Well, I, I can't speak to that because it's, it's not our area, but I can tell you that working with the, oh, let me think of the name of it now, the Teachers, what's the?
Teachers' Leaders Council.
Mm-hmm. The, I'm sorry, I cannot remember it. There is a group that's working for high quali, Equity, Teacher Equity. So the Teacher Equity Committee, thank you, Dr. Delphine, has looked at our work and embedded a good portion of what we're talked about in the Teacher Equity Plan for the state. So it is beginning to get out there, and we've had the opportunity to present to the Nevada Department of Education multiple times this year, and they are gathering information from us, and they're asking for different pieces of information as they move forward. So we are beginning to share and we are beginning to see some influence.
Well, Steve, again, you know, thank you, as you said, we're into this two and a half years, but directing this program, you've kept everybody on point. But I think based upon Sarah, I mean, you had a lot of good people to work with.
So, yeah, please, I don't want to take the credit for that. It is Sarah and the rest of the implementation specialists and our site leaders that are really making the difference here. They're the ones that are doing the work, they're the boots on the ground, and they're the ones that are making the changes.
Well, you know, the Race to the Top with this, you know, the academic achievement, again, why we're here, student achievement, we're getting the pieces and then success beyond the classroom. So we have both parts of this coming together and just thanks to you and all involved.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Agenda Item Number Eight. We have discussion of possible action to approve academic credit for career and technical education, the CTE, and Reserve Officer Training Corp, the ROTC courses. This is for possible action, and Ms. Kiva?
The Nevada Board of, Nevada Board of Education has approved certain combinations of career technical ed and ROTC courses, which can be counted for high school science, lab credit, health, and PE credit. For example, students who take, must take Agriculture Science I and Course II in order to qualify to earn academic credit for a lab science course. Sports medicine students must take Course I and Course II to qualify for a health credit, a half of a health credit. I reviewed the courses, course content for each of the state allowable combinations, which you have on your list there, and I'm recommending local board approval so we can bring this opportunity to our students.
Questions from the board? Comments? All entertain a motion for approval?
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve academic credit for career technical education, CTE, and Reserve Officer Training Corp, ROTC, as submitted.
Second.
We have a second by Joe, and who else? We have two, okay.
We have a second.
All right, we have a second, Joe. And then, okay, before we call for the question, any comments from the, from the public? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Okay, Agenda Item Number Nine, Discussion of Proposed Changes to the CCSD Policy, the First Reading, Policy 218, Internet and Public Act Work, Acceptable Use. And this is for discussion only, and we have our star here, Janice Arthur-Towns.
Presidents Swarzak and members of the board, I bring to you tonight Policy 218, Internet Safety and Network Acceptable Use for the First Reading. This policy was last updated in 2010, and tonight it is updated to align with the Safe and Respect, Policy 543, Safe and Respectable Learning Environments, the Strategic Plan, and all applicable NRS and federal regulations. I am going to bring your attention to Paragraph Two, the last sentence. Mrs., our trustee Crossman brought up to me an error right before the session started. That line will be amended to say Carson City School District, Network, Digital Resources, and Communication Devices shall not be used for commercial purposes, including commercial advertising. This policy was reviewed by a Subcommittee of the Safe and Respectable Learning Environment that consisted of Leann Morris, Shelby Tuttle, and Dr. Susan Moden from Eagle Valley Middle School, and myself. And with that, I would ask if you have any questions or comments.
Right?
The only, and it, it doesn't matter to me either way, but you use shall throughout the entire document, with the exception of in the first paragraph, it says these devices and resources will be used. I don't know if you want to stay consistent with shall.
Okay.
Or will, I, to me, it doesn't matter, but it's the only will versus a bunch of shals.
It shall be done.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Okay, good. Agenda Item Number Ten, Discussion of Proposed Changes to the Following CCSD Regulation, Regulation 218, Internet and Public Network Acceptable Use. And this is for discussion only.
Okay, again, I bring to you Regulation 218 that was updated by a Subcommittee of the Safe and Respectable Learning Environment. We reviewed, also, this one was last updated in 2010. You will see that this regulation actually has three parts. There is one that is kind of an overview of the standard operating procedures and descriptions of what goes on in the network. You will see a student signature page and a staff signature page. All of those have been reviewed and updated. Some of the highlights is that if you take a look at it, you will see now that both the staff and the student pages are calling for responsible or acceptable and responsible use, because what we're looking for is that we know that there are going to be situations where either a staffer or a student has to make a decision, and we want that to be a responsible decision. You will also see that we have included the changes that have been brought about from the implementation of one-to-one and having student devices, one of those being the inclusion of parent and guardian, guardian monitoring of internet activity when the device is off-site, is off-campus. And also, the inclusion of digital citizenship training for both staff and students. Other than basic terminology to update it to more current terms, those are the major highlights of the change in this regulation. And I will entertain questions and comments.
Comments?
I have a question under System Security. The, and I don't want to take responsibility, personal responsibility is important, I don't want to take away from that, but it's any user that has an account on a Carson City School District Network, Digital Resource, or Communication Device is responsible for any activity that takes place while that user is logged into the network. We can get really hypothetical and all envision instances where somebody walks away from their computer or something. I, do we, do we want to at least mention that there would be an investigation or some fact-finding before we just immediately hold somebody responsible? Because I know in my workplaces, there's been plenty of sabotage of folkses if they left their stuff on. But I also work at a job where sometimes you got to get up and leave immediately, but I'm sure that happens around schools every now and again, too. So to just blanket, hold somebody responsible when somebody else may have done something, it gives me pause. I don't know if, we don't want to include something that, that doesn't just immediately hold them accountable, not, that's, immediately hold them responsible without investigating, I guess.
Just something that I can think of in the student setting is that some of the kids were able to find other children's login numbers and have logged in as other, as not themselves. It happened to my son.
Okay.
And I don't know if we want to go that specific in a regulation, but it seems like there should be something there so that if it is your name, but you didn't log in.
Okay.
However, it seems to me that since you aren't indicating any type of specific punishment or anything, I think the language is, is suitable for the regulation, because in essence, there is responsibility there. And I assume before any particular punishments or whatever, that you already are doing a certain amount of investigating. And it's not, that's not laid out here, and so I assume that's happening.
And that is correct. That they, an investigation, a fact-finding investigation does take place when these things happen. Some of the reason that this was suggested to come in here is that we wanted to reinforce that you need to, you need to log out, you need to take the care to not leave your computer logged in and be out of the classroom or away from it. But we can relook at that verbiage.
This is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Joe?
Janice, on Page One, under Monitoring, it says the district has the right to edit and remove, and you, remove any material which the district in sole discretion believes is obscene or otherwise objectionable. If something like that happens, I'm thinking, say, a kid at a middle school or high school level is writing a paper trying to make a point about something, do they get a chance to maybe, if it's questionable, justify why something like that's in there? Or just, for simplicity, is the district just have the right to go delete, start over?
We don't go delete, start over. We usually take the document or the picture, and we take it to the dean or the disciplinarian at that site and ask for them to, we bring it to their attention and ask them to follow proper discipline procedures on that.
Okay. And I just bring it up because it was, it wasn't to this degree, but it was a, a kid that, through their parents I was talking about, and they had written a paper that had some things in there that you or I might have found a little objectionable, but it was in the context of a essay they were trying to write. And the student was instructed, they had to basically start over. And so that, that dialogue of, you know, getting the student involved in that dialogue, I think is important.
And I agree with you.
Janice, the, the signature page that goes out, where does that go out?
The signature page for the student is encompassed in InfoSnap right now, so it's signed electronically. The signature page for the staff member right now is when they're processed through HR.
Okay.
But we're trying to look at making that a little bit more timely than once in your career.
And this is different than that one-on-one contract that they sign?
That is correct.
Okay. Are there going to be any adjustments to that?
Yes, I believe they are making some adjustments to that. And that will also be online as part of InfoSnap for this upcoming registration year.
Any other comments, concerns? Okay, Janice, then, would it be at the next meeting, you'll bring back the policy for, for action?
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, Agenda Item Number Eleven. Discussion and Possible Action on a Resolution to Approve a Final Amended Budget for Fiscal Year 2014, 2015 to Include Recommended Augmentation to Specific Funds. Mr. Feeling?
No, your own.
Good evening, trustees. So tonight, you have a very large pack of paper that really represents a very small change in the bigger scheme of what we do here in the Carson City School District. But what, what is happening, what's occurring is we have two specific funds, one for adult education, one for the adult correctional education or the prison education system. And what we have, what we knew going into this year is that any amount of money left in the fund balance of those funds at the end of this school year, or say, at the end of this fiscal year, would have to be remitted back to the state. And so Mr. Santillo, who directs adult ed and, and prison ed, has done quite a bit to try to use that money with a great deal of forethought in updating a lot of the things that they do in, in that program, in those programs. So in that process, he has spent down quite a bit of that money. And as we are near the end of the year, we are talking on a very regular basis about where his budget is and things that he still is trying to do in it. As a, as we get down to that point in, in the prison ed budget, it's getting very near where we think it's going to get close to zero. And so in his talks with the state regarding that, one of the options that is given to other districts is if they want to transfer money between their adult ed and prison ed funds, between those programs, that is allowed as something that Clark County does apparently on a regular basis. It's just not something traditional for us. We have never done that before. So it's really just representing that if, if need be, and that it really is if need be, that you would be authorizing us to transfer money from adult ed to the prison ed program to help cover some of those costs. So it is authorizing on Page, sorry, on Page Seventeen, the, about two-thirds of the way down, you'll see it says 6,200 other fund transfers, and then below that, 910 inter-fund transfer, prison ed, $50,000. So it's, instead of that money being spent specifically in the adult ed program, it makes it an option to transfer that over to prison ed if, if need be. And in the greater scheme of things, too, I think, when you think of what, you know, prison ed in general is adult ed, just in a, in a different place, so it's not, not out of the realm of, I think, being a reasonable transfer as well. So all we're asking with this 66-page document is for you to approve or authorize that transfer if, if need be.
Questions, concerns, comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval. Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the resolution which authorizes the Director of Fiscal Services to augment specific funds in the final amended budget for fiscal year 2014, 15, and instruct the Director of Fiscal Services to file the documents as necessary to comply with NRS Chapter 354.
Second.
Ron, can I just make a comment real quick?
Yep.
So I, I didn't run this by Mr. Pavlakis, but I just wanted to put it on the record because I'm not really sure. So in my day job, I head the agency that enforces compliance with NRS Chapter 354. I don't, I believe that my interests there and my interests here are the same to ensure compliance with this, with the statute. So I don't think there's a conflict. I just wanted to disclose it for the record before we voted.
Thank you. Before we call for the question, any comments from the audience concerning the proposed amended budget? Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 12, approval of the consent agenda.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second. Steve's seconds. Any comments from the audience regarding the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none? Okay. Agenda item 13, informational items for discussion only. And I only have one thing, Richard, as of 5:00 today, any, or maybe ask Deon, any change that we need to know about as far as legislative action?
I can assure you that nothing happened in Senate Finance that affects this board.
And Richard, anything you'd like to add?
I would only add, Mr. President, that it seems like the governor's been very successful in many of his programs, and those seem to be moving towards a, a direction that could very soon become law. And we continue to watch what's going on with a lot of interest.
Okay, agenda item number 14, request for future agenda items, any at this time?
Not an agenda item, but I'm just wondering if perhaps Mr. Jake Jones exited from the last, or told us this was his last meeting sooner, because do we do some sort of recognition typically for those students?
Thank you, trustee Crossman. That's a very astute. Renee and I were catching each other's eye contact here. As we both learned today, we assumed that he, we would have with Savannah and Jake both one more meeting whereby we could recognize them. And so I caught them both as they were leaving and asked them if they were available to come at our 26th meeting, and they both said yes. So we'll have our usual and customary thank you card and gift card that we'll provide to them and thank them for their service. They, it's really fun to be with those young people, and they do a great job.
Hey, Steve?
This also doesn't need to be an agenda item necessarily, but maybe there, I'd like a little bit of an update, could even be emailed or something, on where we are on the, on the credit for work program. I know we've had plenty on our plate, but be interesting to know what our thoughts are on that.
Any last comments from the public here? Okay. Seeing none, this meeting, oh, Richard.
Mr. President, if I could just get in one more plug for tomorrow night's Community PLC, starts at 6:00 PM at Carson High School Library, and invite not only trustees, but members of our public if they'd like to attend.
Thank you. No other comments, concerns, this meeting is adjourned.